Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask everybody to please settle down. Thanks for coming. I'd like to call tonight's meeting of April 9th, the town of Rhinebeck Town Board Meeting Order. Will everybody please stand in the place of residence?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
I'll make a motion for the applicable prior minutes for our March 12, 2018 regular town board meeting. May I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for our March 12, 2018 special town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for our March 19 special town board meeting. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for our March 29 regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I don't believe I have any announcements, and I'm going to save that and the committee liaison reports until the end of the meeting. I'll be taking this out of order so that we can have Warren here to attend a couple items. And I think we're discussing the Sepasko Lake critical environmental area designation, and we have a resolution in front of us, so I'm going to bring up the resolution. I know that a lot of people here have been noticed by us to come, so thank you. And we can discuss it and the critical environmental area designation at the same time. So I'd like a motion for Resolution 2018-096, a Hudsonia biodiversity assessment of Sepasko Lake is tabled at our March 29 meeting. Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Good.
Thank you, Alan. And so we have some discussion here. We have Corinna Ward in the chair of our conservation advisory board, and we have our town attorney here to talk about this. Warren, how is it best to handle this? Do you want to talk to us about what a critical-
Did you want to-
Sure, I can begin.
Yeah, why don't you give us the background, the history of the proposal?
Yeah. Thank you all very much for coming. I'm Corinna Ward, and I'm the chair of the CAV. So, critical environmental area designation for Sepasko, we, CAV, was, had some, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, we had a certain, there was a planning board assessment that happened last year when we realized that there was no information for Sepasko Lake in our databases. DEC didn't have any environmental information either, and Michael Kimble talked about this last time, their file was not, you don't know anything about the lake. And in the comprehensive plan, it talks about making several critical environmental areas designated them. And so we asked Hudsonia for a bid to do the biodiversity assessment. The biodiversity assessment is the first step in becoming a CEA. After that, there's a series of public notices, a public hearing, and then after that, the town board would submit that to the DEC after it's formally voted on. So this is the beginning of the beginning of the process. And I think that Warren has a lot more experience with the repercussions of what a CEA does and how it sort of filters through, but-
Can I just ask how this CAV decided to consider Sepasko Lake?
Yes, so in the comprehensive plan, it talks about, number one, in our actions was every perennial stream corridor and all open bodies of water will be delineated as a CEA.
Can you address the town board, please?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes, of course. So that's, and that's sort of what we were looking at.
Even though this is private land surrounds it?
Well, it could have been done differently.
Are there any other air, I mean, we can, I just want to talk at some point, it doesn't have to be now, as to what might be looked at for a critical environmental study and how, who makes those recommendations?
Yes. I think that could have been done differently as well. I would concur.
Warren, do you want to add anything?
The concern I had with the critical designation of Lake Sepasko as a critical environmental area is that, first of all, it's a private lake. It's not accessible to the public. The ones that I've dealt with before have been properties that are enjoyed by the public. The last one I did was the one in Sissing Mountain area in Pine Plains. And usually, just in my experience, the designation of a CEA is usually associated with properties of that nature. So I was a little concerned about the impact this might have on the property owners, not just Lake Sepasko, but the other property owners who own property around the lake. Because once you designate the property as a critical environmental area, there is a heightened scrutiny that's been associated or given to any project that's within or substantially contiguous to the CEA during the environmental review and the permitting process. So it could have the potential for making certain projects of the Lake Sepasko homeowners more difficult in terms of what they're doing to deal with the weeds, I forgot what the name of it, there's a special name for what they have in that lake. And other property owners who want to develop along that lake could find that an unlisted action in an environmental review is elevated to the point where the reviewing, planning board, the other reviewing agency might require an environmental impact statement, which is heightened scrutiny for that type of project. So I'm not saying that it shouldn't happen. What I had recommended was that the property owners be notified of what the town was proposing before we move forward with this designation. And there's another reason for that, too, and that's if you, seeker, DEC has what we call a seeker handbook. It's a handbook to guide municipalities in performing their duties under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And they have a section on critical environmental areas. And one of the things that they recommend before municipality undertake anything in terms of considering a critical environmental area designation is to hold an informational meeting with affected landowners and interested agencies to get the input from the public and possibly answer questions about what the ramifications might be and what their concerns would be. So that's, I was hoping we could start that process tonight. It looks like we have a lot of people here.
We sent out, we notified everybody who's a member of, whose property is around the lake. But what do you think about my point of a publicly funded study in a critical environmental area for a non-public piece of land?
Well, that's only, it can be, it can happen. It doesn't, there's not, there's no, there's no reason why we can't do that if we determine that it's something that we want to protect. It's just that usually these are not properties that are private properties, that are not subject to public use or enjoyment. So we wouldn't be spending, you know, money to do that study, but there's no reason why we can't protect Lake Sepasko. We deem it to have the qualities that are identified under the DEC regulations for CEA protection. So that's not an insurmountable burden. It's just a little bit unusual in my experience. So if we have, I don't have a lot of time to spend here, but if we, if you want to open it up to the public so people from Lake Sepasko can, we'll try to answer as many questions as we can. I may not have all the answers to your question.
If you want to come and speak or ask us questions, or give us anything to consider, if you want to hear from me whether or not you think this is a good idea, not a good idea, do you want to come up here? Come. Thanks.
My name is Joan Engel. I don't live at Sepasko anymore. Formerly is Sepasko owner and formerly the CAC, before of a CAV of the town of Rhinebeck. And I did participate in the Hudsonia biodiversity mapping of the town of Rhinebeck. And at that time, it was very, Sepasko Lake was very significant. We almost designated it as a hamlet because of the groupings. At the time, I was on the Open Space Portal, has a PIS as well. Anyway, Sepasko Lake has the cardinal flower, the button bush, I mean, there are three or four or five botanical, not endangered, but critical. They're critical, yes. And also, I think the fact that it is on map, the lake at one point mentioned the depth of the entire thing, and it is very deep. There are very few lakes in the area that are that deep and are spring fed. It does have inlet and wheatgrass. It has both. I was involved with the study of possibly bringing carp, and we had to figure out if it produced fish ever since so long. So there were lots of things done in the past, and as the years have gone by, I feel that it is valuable to look, I'm just, that's an outsider, but having had all that background with the town, with these areas, I think it's important to look ahead and try to protect any areas, pipes of water included, that are valuable and would be worthwhile to, I don't know if it will always remain private. I mean, it's not private in that the Ramapo Lake Association does have open days when people come there as well. And I know you've been in a lot, you know, over there. So it's not private, private, but yes. So pass my input. Thank you. So much for your time.
Anybody else? You're addressing the board. Please address the board. You're talking about something.
Hi, I'm Nick Staley. My dad developed all that one side of Lake Sepasko. I think as landowners there were concerned, I got word from the Seabulls, who happened to own a lot right next to our beach, and my sister, who actually owns a lot of lake frontage, that would this hamper the possible development of these lots in any way, or be a financial burden to the owners to get anything approved? I think the other major concern I've heard from the folks at the village is the association of all the owners around the lake, they have a lake management program, which we pay for. And that is to prevent the Eurasian milkfoil. And we have one of the best lakes specialists in the state, Carl Parachute, who belongs to the state of lake associations and is very knowledgeable on how to keep Sepasko Lake pristine. And it is. So those are the two major concerns I have, and I've heard from my fellow residents out there. We don't want to restrict any development that's been approved. There are approved building lots out there. As you probably don't know, there's 16 or 17 that are not developed. The Seabulls actually bought their lot just to use the lake. And so did a lot of village people. They never intend to build out there. That's why we have so many vacant lots. But we certainly want to protect our most valuable asset, and one of the most valuable assets in the town, and that's Lake Sepasko. And, you know, there's been damage done to it by people around it. A lady up on Brooklyn Heights a few years ago let a beaver dam out and it came right down into the lake. And that was devastating, but it worked out for them. So those are, I think, the, Warren, the concerns that I could bring to you from the folks at Lake Sepasko. And there's probably others. Anybody else have any? Let me know.
Thank you. Or they can speak directly to us. Warren, is it true that we can do the Hudsonia study and it doesn't mean that we're, we could pursue a critical environmental area designation? It's two steps. We could fund a Hudsonia study, we could look at what we find, and then we could decide or not to continue with the CEA designation?
Yeah. We had done a similar study for a good portion of the town when we were doing the comprehensive plan, but Lake Sepasko was not covered by that study. So, yeah, we could utilize it for development projects, the planning board could use that as a resource. As a matter of fact, I was going to mention that there, DEC in their section on CEAs says, indicates that the towns, municipalities could explore alternatives to design, designating an area as a critical environmental area. And that would be through adoption of direct controls such as local wetlands, steep slopes, aquifer protection, districts or ordinances, acquisition by an area, of an area by a public or not-for-profit entity, plus adoption and implementation of a management plan, identification of an area for which an individual agency establishes a policy to require a full IAEA and coordinated review for all or certain kinds, types of unlisted actions. So the town could do all this, and we do have a lot of, an enormous amount of protection in our zoning law already for protection of the environment. So we could utilize that study and possibly do something less than a CEA designation, but do something that would protect, provide for protection.
So unless we enacted or amended our current zoning law, a Hudsonia study would not hamper, further handful of, hamper development of vacant lots nor cost homeowners any more money?
Not, well, I can't say that unequivocally.
If we did a Hudsonia study and we did not pursue the CEA designation without amending our zoning law, would there be any restriction of building there, or would it cost homeowners any more?
No. What would happen would be that projects, if you're building a single-family residence, you don't need a, you don't go through a review process through the planning board, so you just get a building permit. Those types of developments would not be affected at all unless we change our-
But within 100 feet of water, it's, or wetland-
Well, then our wetland law would trigger those protections. So there are certain things that even for a single-family residence that would require heightened scrutiny depending on where the, the location. I mean, if it's in a wetland or it's going to impact the wetland, those things have to be resolved by the town. But just having a CEA designation doesn't mean that a building permit for a single-family residence must undergo any heightened scrutiny. But if somebody were to come in for a multifamily development along that lake, that would certainly require permitting by the, by the planning board. And in that process, that development would undergo heightened scrutiny by the planning board because of the CEA designation. So they would determine whether, whatever they're doing there would have a significant impact on a, on the lake itself.
If I think about like another development, if there were-
Someone else came in on some of the, yeah, there's properties around the lakes. I don't know who owns all those properties, but there's, I think there's a significant amount of undeveloped property.
When most of it's on the other side of the lake, it's all by Camp Ramapo.
Right.
Right, but they're all on the side of the lake.
But Camp Ramapo, you know, goes out of business and sells that property or sells to someone who could develop-
Yeah, but a lot of it secretly goes straight down to the lake. So not very good lakefronters unless you want to jump off a cliff.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have questions or want us?
I'm Hillary Kilmer. I do a lot of lakefrontage. So my concern is, a lot of the things talked in here by Hudsonia is distance from the lake. Who determines where the lake is? Who determines the perimeter of that lake? That lake is changed drastically. I've done some research on old deeds, and the lake isn't even where it was years and years ago. So when somebody says 1,000 meters from here and 500 meters from there, where are they going to make that determination? Because I have water on some of my property, I have no water on others. The lake is high some years, it's low some years. Where do they start? Where would they start to determine 500 meters or 100 meters? So that's kind of being, I own so much lakefrontage. I own all the way to Ramapo from the common area. So I don't quite know how that would work. And there's actually even old deeds, but they haven't been developed. So it's kind of a strange situation. And the only other comment I wanted to make is I feel the people who own property on the lake and the Lake Sepasko Corporation and Ramapo could not take better care of that lake than protect it. And I don't really feel that the town should spend any, a town taxpayer, the town people can't go use that lake. Why would the town spend money? If we were neglecting our lake, if you want any, if somebody has any interest in reports on what we get when we do lab work and when we do our treatments, any of that, I'm sure, I'm not sure, but I'm hopeful that our board would be willing to pass that on. But I really don't see why you would spend town money on a lake that can't be used by people in the town, and especially a lake that is so well cared for. Thanks.
Thanks.
Just let me discuss the boundaries of lake. I raised it at the last meeting because I was concerned about how we would determine what the property boundaries are for Sepasko Lake. And it's true that lakes and wetlands change in their size, and we deal with those problems all the time when we're dealing with federal and state wetlands. They have to be flagged and reflagged because they change over a period of time. And same thing happens with lakes. So one of the things we have to do if we're doing a CEA designation is have a map, and usually it's a survey map, of the area that you're designating. So that could be an additional cost that we, I don't think that was covered by Eric's quote. And we would, you're right, it might have to be, that's why they talk in terms of affecting properties within the CEA area or substantially contiguous to it. So you don't just look at the lake, but you look at contiguous areas and what impacts projects are going to have. But, yeah, trying to decide what the boundaries of Lake Sepasko are, could be an issue.
Anybody else?
It doesn't matter.
Yes, please come up and-
Yeah, I don't know.
You would, you're addressing the town board.
My name is Free Gallagher. I'm the property owner next to the end of Sepasko. I did an extensive report indicating thousands of dollars at my own popport to make a meeting at the end of last year. I also, going back many years, when I was the only one in the lake in a kayak hand harvesting Eurasian milkfoil. Carl has done a mighty job of trying to deal with alternative choices that were in the best interests of the lake. Where I'm a little bit confused, and maybe I just missed what was being said. For us to do anything on the lake, DEC had to give the permits. So when the ally came in, DEC had to be there. I don't know where everyone was when the promenade was being clear cut. Chainsaws were running at night. All the wildlife that was there for decades, gone.
What promenade are you talking about? I'm sorry.
To the northeast of my property. It's property next door. The lake, to me, looks the same. It's got the lily pads, the Eurasian milkfoil. I think we've chanted and done that the correct way. Promenade is at the end, so if you went from the camp, it's the private part of the lake.
On the same side as the public, as the Sepasko Village Beach?
Well, the lake rounds around. So if you go down from the beach at Sepasko and you continue down the lake, you have Melly's property that is under construction now in an enormous way. You have inlet there. You have a lovely couple that just weekend. There's my property. There is a lot. And there is then what I believe is 27 acres, okay? 27 acre-
The Baker property.
The Baker property, okay. So if you went onto the Baker property, which has a lovely little cottage that was built in 1900, and you just followed the lake around, there's a promenade that goes down where the old timers used to leave their rowboats and do their fishing, and you never found garbage in the lake. There was nothing. There were beautiful trees. Eagles around. There were swans around, okay? It's all been cut. And at the meeting I attended last year when I brought that report-
This was a planning board meeting, not a town board meeting?
Whatever the meeting was, the report that a reputable engineering firm did, all the correspondence from DEC, all the maps, everything, I brought in so that the planning board had it.
So just so you know, we, you came and saw me last week, or you were here before-
I came about to note timeline the letter.
We did find the, your report, and it was distributed to the town board members. Yeah, we have it right here.
Okay. DEC's input is there. Wetlands, the area that I recall, it's sacred. I don't see anything that's changed, okay? Except now, it's been clear cut. And if somebody is okay with what they're doing, they're not running chainsaws at 5:00 at night in pitch black. And the area, okay, that you're supposed to be off the edge of the lake, whether it's wet or not, is just seriously common sense. You just, there's certain things that we just don't do.
Was this reported to our zoning department? Because we have a zoning enforcement officer. This is, it's-
But I'm listening. I have no idea. You and I had a discussion when I came in about the time, because I think these meetings are important. What I am not clear about, what is the relevance of which board gets what if it's involved in our community, which is Rhinebeck? The village Rhinebeck, the town Rhinebeck, Ramapo's been there about 93 years. And now, all of a sudden, okay, this lake has been decimated at one end. So you get the bad weather we've had, you get the rain, and all of that is moving into the lake. The area that was the lowest, okay, which is what prompted me to do that report, was questioning the ability to dredge. It was something I was familiar with, not here. But it's something that you have to do your homework on before you buy something or before you set out to do something, unless you have a special set of rules. The damage that's been done at that end of Sepasko Lake, I don't remember anyone saying anything about except for Mr. Paris. No one. And there's no way on a lake that you can not hear chainsaws running at 5:00, 6:00 at night. It doesn't matter. Or just drive on 308 past the property, and this wonderful open space that's around the lake is, it's a pigsty. So the question I really wondered, sir, was about DEC. And who needs to know what, whatever? Because with the report I had done, that was all of the information that one would want to have before they spend 3/4 of a million dollars plus. Or you're going to talk to someone about wanting to make sure that the preservation of this beautiful, beautiful lake is taken care of. No one did anything. I really appreciate- I really appreciate you all letting me have the time to speak with you. Thank you.
Anytime. Anybody else?
Kathy Dunn. I'm a homeowner in Sepasko Village. Just a few things. I have some of the same concerns and just opinions that Valerie shared and Nick shared. I'm concerned as a property owner there that if we are, if it's more costly to get permits or it takes too much time, that it's something that our village, that I was president in for many years, it would be so costly, we run a very tight budget. If we couldn't afford to treat the milkfoil, when that starts growing up, nobody's going to want to swim in the lake. And that could affect our property value. So that's a concern of mine and just for the quality of the life of the people who live around the lake and I know the camp too. The other thing was if Hudsonia does do this study and it's all private property around the lake, how do they access the lake? Do they have to get permission from a homeowner or from the association? Are they insured if they're coming on to private property? So that's a question I have. And, oh, let's see. And then also, just finally, one other thing. Thank you for the letter. Didn't have the time on it, so I don't know if that's from some people. Didn't show up, but we did that out. But also, I'm concerned you had mentioned that the public homeowners need to be notified. And that letter was sent out after Pete and Pearl showed up in a meeting where you're ready to vote to spend money, or am I correct in that?
I'll just, here, I do not control the agenda for the meetings. Anything can be put on the agenda by being sent to our town clerk. We had no intention of voting just because there's an agenda item. Of course, we'd want to discuss it. It came up that we would need to notify homeowners. There's no statutory or legal ability. It's not a public hearing per se, but we wouldn't want to act on anything affecting a group of homeowners without public access. So we tabled it and sent out letters that we weren't required to do so by law, but believe that it's, we don't want to make a decision for a bunch of people without having input and opinions from you.
Sure appreciate that.
Also, you know, my concern is that it is largely private. It is an amazing part of the town. And we do care about it, even though we don't have access to it. But we don't want hardships. I'm speaking for myself. I have the same.
Oh, okay. And then, so just finally, I would like to request that you hold off on the study until the CAB and maybe the town board meets with our Lake Preservation Committee and maybe sits down with Carl and the camp and members of the boards to get all the information that we already have. We might have what you're looking for and what you need. And you could say all of the taxpayers of Rhinebeck, not just people who own property around the lake, for a thousand and something dollars because we might have what you need already. So, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
My name is Roberta Sumiglia. I'm a homeowner at Sepasko. And I just wanted to add a few things. This lake is our baby and we rock it. We take extremely good care of the lake. I'm sure Carl will get up and speak a little bit later. The herons like it there. The geese like it there. The turtles are happy. The fish are happy. We do not allow anybody on the lake with a gas engine. As far as I've lived there, 20 years, there are no gas engines allowed on the lake. We request that anybody who brings a boat from the outside because of the zebra, you know, the zebra mussels, that they have dedicated boats that are put in the lake. Most people in the community do not use any fertilizer on their lawn because they're afraid of the runoff that will affect the lake. And one of the things that I'm concerned about that I don't think was mentioned was how will the homeowners' use of the lake be impacted? Can we no longer kayak because we're going to disturb the blending turtles? Can we no longer swim in the lake? Really, I mean, what are the, you know, what are the implications of that? And the last thing, most importantly, we got no cash. So if you want anything done there and it's going to require the 50 homeowners or so in the community to chip in, that's not going to happen. The other thing I wonder about are roads. We pay to have our, we're not town roads, we're private roads. And if you don't believe that, come on and rumble through and find out that we're not kept up by the, you know, by the town. So we just, you know, little by little, you know, do a section of the road every, you know, every year. And I'm wondering, for example, if they would say that we can't pave our road because it's too close to the, you know, it's too close to the lake. So that's all I wanted to add. You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Scott Kempfley, Director of Operations at Ramapo for Children. We just have a few concerns in terms of it sort of seemed like it was coming out of isolation as people talked about we all participated in, you know, different lake studies. Hudsonia's actually done a study on our property. And so in some aspects, we're not against or for either way, but that there's just been a lot of different studies and that it didn't seem to make sense if we were doing this in isolation for whether it's environmental studies, people have to do to put a beach in or whatever, and that it shall be, there should be some compilation of looking at everything instead of just this one study. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, there's that aspect. We also are a little concerned about the development. For example, we have a playground that's been there for, I don't know, 30 or 40 years. If we ever wanted to redo that playground and it is within, you know, 1,000 feet or 100 feet, would that then limit us? Because we don't have, even though we have a lot of acreage, we don't have a lot of open space. And so by designating this, is this then going to limit us to upgrade something like that? So we just have some concerns. We're not a for or against, you know, we really want what's best because as everyone said, the lake is the biggest asset. It's one of the biggest assets for our organization. And, you know, I think over the years, the vote, all the property owners, we've really developed a pretty good community in terms of taking care of the lake. And so, I mean, I definitely would like to continue that and that's it.
Thank you.
Carl Paris, also a member of Sepasko Village and head of the Sepasko Lake Preservation Association. And I spoke a couple of weeks ago. And so I hope that everybody here has had a chance to ask questions. So please make sure you still have questions. I don't know the answers to some of the questions that were asked. But I would like to say that some of our practices on the lake have just been because we've been neighborly. But if there was a landowner who wanted to put a motorboat on the lake and go water skiing, I don't think we have any way of stopping them. It's a handshake that we don't put motors on the lake. There's no rule, there's no regulation. We have no way of enforcing that. I called the DEC and I talked to the woman who reviews our permits. And I don't have a great relationship with her because I've been kind of angry through the years of how slow some of those permits are coming through. But I asked her, if there was a CEA in place, would it change very much the kinds of treatments that she sees that we're doing on a semi-regular basis, every four or five years we do something? And she said that she, they have to look at it, that she didn't think it would be a major issue for the kinds of things that we're doing now. We need to do something new in the future. Who knows? It depends on what that was. So from my perspective at the moment, and I could be all wrong on this, but from my perspective, I think for the kinds of, you know, treating the lake, removing lily pads, we hope to have our permit approved very soon, I think that we're okay. We might have to jump through a little more hoops, but we've already jumped through so many. I don't think it would make too much of a difference. So I am actually more concerned, not so much with the ability of some, I don't think there's an issue with the ability to build a house on Sepasko, one of the lots in Sepasko Village. But I am concerned about development along the shoreline of the lake. And I would like to have some leverage, you know, with the town of Mylan because their watershed for Sepasko Lake is actually in the town of Mylan. And so if we were to contact them and say, well, you have to change your practices in how you're managing our watershed, we have a CEA in place as opposed to please don't do whatever you were doing. Again, I think they could ignore it and I don't know who enforces anything. But I think there would be some help. So it's really, it's trade-off. So it would be an inconvenience for some people who want to use some development, perhaps, potentially, depending on the kind of development they want to do. And we are all concerned about what Bree Gallagher was talking about in the northern end of the lake. And I think we could continue to manage the weeds and so forth.
Thank you. Before anybody else addresses us, in case you do, I know Warren's got a time limit here. So I just wanted to get your input before you have to go to your next meeting, which is, I mean, I guess, you know, we need to listen to the homeowners. Maybe a good next step would be to have the CAB chair and another member be offline with your homeowners group and your lake association, Mr. Paris and talk more in depth. I'm neutral, you know, if this is going to help you and you want to pursue it, I'd support it. If bulk of you don't want it, you know, I'm only one of five. So I would say that might be a good next step. What do you think, Warren?
Yeah, from what I heard tonight, I mean, a lot of, some of the concerns I could address. I don't have time to do it tonight, but I can attend one of these meetings and address some of those concerns. But I think that another meeting with not just the homeowners in Sepasko, but the property owners along the lake would be a good idea.
Everybody around the lake was no, we did send out a letter.
Right. And then have Mylan involved because I am concerned about the northern, well, what is that? The eastern part of the lake, I guess. And before we commit ourselves to moving forward with the project, it's possible that somebody from Hudsonia could attend one of those meetings. And we could ask some of the questions that the property owners had about access to property because you're right, you have to have, you just can't go trespassing over people's property, even if the town says they can because we don't have the authority to do that. And there is a concern about the mapping of the lake. I'd like to know how Hudsonia is going to do that so we have an accurate reading of what the lake is and what the setbacks are from that lake. But I really think that my advice would be to hold off taking any affirmative action on moving forward with this until we do that.
So maybe set up a meeting with our conservation advisory board chair, Corinna, and Carl and whoever else from the homeowners want to meet. You have to be clear on what you want us to do. If we can help you, if it's going to be help or hindrance, we can certainly get Mylan involved. We can certainly ask Hudsonia to do another public notice with the time this time to all of you and have Hudsonia come here and talk and answer more questions. And we don't have to rush into this. Maybe it will be helpful too. Maybe it's something you don't want us to consider, so.
Yeah, we can always do this. I mean, we're not losing an opportunity to do this.
I mean, we're considering this because the CAB asked us to, so.
And I will just add that we, this was not, this was meant as a helping idea. And we may have done a little bit of cart before the horse, in which case I'm sorry. But I think it's good that we're having this conversation and we can decide whatever you all would like to do. This is, I work for you all, so.
I am concerned about the issues that appear to be clear-cutting along the lake.
Yeah, I mean, really, the enforcement mechanism for that is.
And we do have, we have provisions on our zoning laws about that.
We have a zoning enforcement officer.
So I don't know why that wasn't addressed.
Well, it needs to be reported. Sometimes we don't know what's going on.
Who do we call? What's the phone number?
You call the town hall, you speak to our zoning administrator, and then you let me know. If there's a problem, you let me know and I follow up.
There's a problem.
I'm here every day.
There's a problem. And it desperately needs to be, it needs to be looked at by the zoning board because there's clearly a problem.
No, not the zoning board, by our zoning enforcement officer.
There's a problem.
So we're aware of a problem and we have, we have an investigation and our zoning enforcement officer is working in conjunction with our special prosecutor for one specific homeowner there who is not in compliance. So I am always available. I'm here every day. You can call the town clerk, you can call the zoning clerk, you can call me if there's a problem. I keep hearing that, Phil, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's hurting my feeling. Thanks, Warren. Warren's got to go to another meeting. We can, can we take a two-minute break? I mean, you can stay, but does that sound like a good next step or? Bree, thanks for coming, everybody. If you stay, you stay. We can continue. We'll be in touch. Thank you for coming, everybody. Bob, we're continuing with our meeting. Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Was 096 tables again?
Yes. It's, let's continue. We're tabling this motion here. Ryan, did you want to address us?
Oh, no. There was a question about the Baker property.
We'll talk about that later. I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't really think we should be talking about specific people. Never do. We're tabling, we had motion resolution 2018-096, Hudsonia biodiversity assessment of Sepasko Lake. We're going to table it again. I think the takeaway from this is that the CAB chair and another person needs to meet with the lake committee and that we need to notice another meeting and get Mylan involved and Hudsonia involved. You guys pretty much. I'll make a motion, thanks, Steve, for resolution 2018-104 for preliminary accounts, payables, abstracts, four, 33 checks totaling $76,159.7. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2018-105 for capital projects, abstracts, one check for $8,036. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We have no transfers. I'm looking for a motion and a second for resolution 2018-106 for our recreation yoga program. Thank you. Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2018-107. It's a memorandum of agreement with the Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. The Hudson River Municipalities wish to share information and resources to protect and improve our water quality in the Hudson River S4 and its tributaries. This is what we have been working on with Riverkeeper. It's the seven communities that get their drinking water from the Hudson. It's us with the village, it's Hyde Park, it's the city and town of Kipsey, it's the Silcas, and it's Lloyd. So this is a sort of memorandum of the work that we're doing. And again, thank you, Riverkeeper and the other municipalities for all this work. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'm looking for a motion for resolution 2018-108 for a request for bids to replace the town hall main electrical service. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Alan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Ed, thanks for all your stick-to-itiveness with this, replacing our 1930s electrical panel and.
This should be the end.
Well, you know, someday we will, someday we will have an updated electrical panel and air conditioner. and air conditioner. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2018-109 acknowledging New York State law on workplace smoking. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. This because, because of the state law, we never added this into our town policy. This is the law, it's the policy. We're acknowledging it. I think I'll add it as an addendum to our policy so that there are no questions. There is no smoking anywhere inside on town property or within twenty feet of any town buildings. If we have offenders and people are smoking in parks and we want to look at that in the future, we can. There's no smoking in town-owned vehicles. There is no smoking and it's, it's a, it's, it's an offense that carries escalating corrective measures and could culminate in a fire. For instance, if someone is smoking their town vehicle. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-110, attendance, planning board member at conference at the New York Planning Federation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
Second.
This is a, late last year, the village approached us about doing, the village planning board and the mayor approached us about doing joint training for the town and village planning board on specific education that affects our planning boards and we agreed to cooperate on that. So we're hiring experts like this James, he does all the visual, help me, all the visual studies for any of our bigger projects. We're going to be hiring experts to come and teach the town and village planning board instead of sending planning board members to Saratoga Springs or Lake George, which can cost, you know, upwards of a thousand dollars per person. We'll bring people here and work jointly with the village. Because that wasn't clear to a planning board member who wanted to attend, this is allowing us to pay for that registration fee and if this planning board member wants to attend, he or she can pay for his own lodging and expenses. We're paying for registration only and putting all of our money into joint, joint teaching that specifically targets things that are village.
Good. And he knows what she's doing, right?
I don't know. Brennan is the liaison to this and she's retail for, so. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thanks, Chauncey. So moved. Resolution 2018-111, attendance of town board members at the Hudson Valley Affordable Housing Seminar. I need a motion and a second. Anybody? Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Alan. Now we can discuss it. It's only twenty-five dollars per person. It's a case. I think anybody who wants to go should go. Anyone from our town board, our planning board, or affordable housing?
I'd love to go.
Okay, very good. I'd like to just amend this. Any town board, any workforce housing or planning board member that would like to attend for twenty-five dollars. Is that, can someone second my amendment?
Second.
Thank you. We'll vote in the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. We have an open resolution. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-112, I'll make the motion for bookkeeping software upgrade. This is something that we have to get every year for our, I can't even remember the name of it, I can't remember words anymore.
Yeah.
IDA open software. We need it because we have to do bookkeeping. Is there any further, I motioned it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2018-113, I'll make the motion for grant contract for installation of our EV charging stations. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. As you know, Rhinebeck resident Chris Quimby has been working with myself and deputy clerk Joan Winnie and the village and we did get the state grant for our EV charging and we're going to, you're allowing me to sign the contract and start getting it going. We'll have two charging stations at our library, town parking lot and the village will have another four. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. We've discussed our Supasco Lake CEA designation. It needs to be continued. I know there's some new business before us, but so, Corinne, you have something to say?
Yes, the conservation advisory board met with the woman from the New York State DC about clean energy community and climate smart communities. And the fact that we just passed the charging station is one of four things that...
Yeah, we're almost there.
I know.
We have it done.
So CAV would love to spearhead doing the grant where we get five thousand dollars once we've done four of them.
And they still have the money left. If you could take it, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, awesome. And then we're hoping that our code and our building structure can go to a new training and then also I will leave...
For what? What is the training course?
It is for energy code enforcement.
Yeah. If you'd like to, that'd be great. You know, we have our expedited permitting for solar.
Yes, I need to update that because they have redone it as of the fall, so I need to give you new paperwork.
So we just need one more thing and we can get our clean community certification, which we've been striving for.
Awesome. And the last thing I wanted to ask is could the CAV move forward with putting together a community smart task force?
I don't see why not.
Awesome.
I'm fine with that.
Thanks.
I mean, you know, you also may want to come to one of our environmental committee meetings with the mayor and I, chair, and we could certainly talk about that more there and get as many people involved as we'd like to.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
She had that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course, the OD project could be the fourth one.
Yes, yes. We've got our, we've got our PV, you know, units on town hall. We've got energy audits that we've done. We've got our expedited permitting. We've got our EV chargers, our LED. I think we're there.
Speaking of all this, Earth Day is April twenty-second.
It's true.
Just so everybody knows, this is, this is related, and I'll explain in a minute, to the fence proposal that Amtrak has put forth. There's going to be a, I don't want to call it a demonstration.
What do you mean, a meeting?
A meeting at, in Germantown to basically...
On Earth Day.
Yeah, on Earth Day.
From eleven to one?
Noon to two p.m.
Or two?
At Lasher Park in Germantown to basically raise awareness about the potential loss of riverfront access due to the Amtrak proposal. The village of Castle and Hudson is coordinating with Germantown as well. One of the things that I was asked to do is to propose that we do something at the waterfront here on that day.
So I've been talking to Sina Hudson and we can certainly do it. They're putting up four gates or they're asking to put up four gates. There, there's one, three gates. There's one at, near the village water treatment plant and it's a gate that only stops a dirt road from going over the track. And the other two are, one's a replacement gate at the north and south ends of the parking lot.
Right.
And there's no fence going up in Rhinebeck. People want to show up. I'm going to write about it and let the public know, you know, about our river. Certainly, we've been working with the state planning department and have wanted Amtrak to come and present to us on what they're doing. We finally got better pictures and an equal concern to us is that Amtrak isn't taking care of the infrastructure at the train station. And I don't believe this is going to hinder access to the river here. It will hinder cars from driving over the railroad tracks at non, you know, closings.
The fire departments are okay?
Well, we haven't had a discussion with Amtrak and the fire departments are going to need access in case of an emergency, so that's a concern.
Yeah, well, that's one concern.
Yeah, we all are. I told Sina Hudson that I didn't think of demonstration on Earth Day, but, you know, if that's something someone wants to organize, fine, but...
I was going to, the waterfront committee, which is now part of the rec committee, Brennan's not here, but I'll talk to...
We can send anything, yeah. We can put it on our website. We can put it on our Facebook page. Just make a reminder for people that it's Earth Day and to go down and appreciate the river. We have a great waterfront park and, you know, we've done a lot of work to protect it. We've worked to keep the barges off. We've been working with Riverkeeper for our water quality from the Hudson and from its tributaries and, you know, awareness from Amtrak and it's something we'll keep doing. There is a, resolution 2018-114, retaining legal counsel for the defense of appeal from decision in Article seventeen proceeding, seventy-eight proceeding, Amanda Miller, Bill Karati, Ed Hall versus the town of Rhinebeck. I will make a motion. May I have a second? The, I made it, Ed seconded it. We won the case from Judge Rosa decidedly with the lawsuit from Amanda Miller, Bill Karati, Ed Hall for our community solar. They have noticed us that they may appeal this. They have six months to perfect their appeal and we are retaining Warren Laplansky and John Lyons to continue to...
Represent people.
Thank you. Represent the planning board and the town board in this appeal. It's a, he'll be a appellate for a particular couple of years and we will continue to represent our interests and the interest of community solar in Rhinebeck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Is there any further discussion or any thing else that everybody wants to?
Yeah, I got just a few things. One is highway department backup, data backup has really been ad hoc to be fine and we're putting together a proposal to do something. We're not looking at a lot of money, but at the moment, the highway department data is not being backed up on a regular basis or a reliable basis. There are basically two options. One is to go to an outside company looking at like thirty dollars a month to back up three PCs or hook it up to the server behind the curtain here and have...
Boss.
And have, have the backups be part of the backing up that happens there automatically. So Fred is putting together a proposal. We talked earlier about having a cell phone policy. I'm going to work some numbers together and see, see whether we can do something more or whether there's a more rational way to do it or not.
I can email you who currently has cell phones.
Yeah, I'll talk to, and then finally, we've had some problems downstairs, particularly with the topology and the equipment that runs the internal land, internal local area network. And we're looking at some proposals to upgrade some of the routers and switches and so forth so that they're more manageable. They're not, some of them can't be managed remotely, which means somebody, if there's a problem, somebody has to come to the town hall to fix it as opposed to being able to do it from, say, PCA's site. So they're, so a proposal to put something together is going on now. We're looking at, let's see, here's, PCA's proposal is, let me give you a number. Yeah, it's, you know, a couple thousand dollars. It's not a lot, it's not a lot of money. And it would help with the problem we had earlier this year where you could, you could stream video on one workstation downstairs, but not on the one in the next desk.
So apropos of that, and at the next meeting I'll have a proposal for you where if we're going to proceed with amnesty during our recall for all people who may have done building without a permit, we need to hire two people to input everything into municipality? We either need a working wifi down there that's reliable or we need a couple other hard-wired things. And this sort of has to start, you know, May, June, July, August and be done by then. So we'll have that together for the next meeting.
Okay, I'll add that to the list.
Also, are you done?
Yeah.
We got our financial report in from Lori Dody, our independent CPA auditor. Everybody has copies in his or her box. You should read them and then we can make the reports, put them on our website, but flying colors from clerks and, you know, always a couple areas to improve on which we can look at and, but everything's in really good shape.
Good.
Anybody have anything else?
There's one item on the agenda I probably ought to pick just a moment for. Under the discussion items, release for Central Hudson for electrical overcharges. That refers to an amount of money that Central Hudson owes us. We ferreted this out in connection with the audit of our Central Hudson accounts in connection with the LED project. They owe us twenty-six hundred dollars approximately. They've asked for a release in exchange of a check. We have to negotiate the language of the release a little bit. They ask for more than we think they're entitled to. Warren and I will be working on that.
Thank you.
We'll get it taken care of.
Thank you for doing all the work on this.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, anything? If there's nothing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.